Good evening. I would like to call the April 24, 2017 Belbrook City Council meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of April 10, 2017. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
Seeing none, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements and special guests. We have a few guests this evening, three to be exact, and we're going to first start with the Belbrook Garden Club Earth Day poster contest winners. I'm going to let Mrs. Middlestetter introduce our person who's going to talk about each of the kids.
Right, thank you, Mayor. I asked Tia Yankel to come up to the podium, please, and bring your winners with you. Tia was a fairly new member of our garden club, and she took on the responsibility of coordinating with the art teacher at the middle school to incorporate the posters into their art curriculum, and I will let her explain what happened then.
Can we have everyone come up right out here in front? No, well, we sort of need you back there because of the mic, because it's on TV and you can't hear without a microphone.
Hi again, I'm Tia Yankel with the Belbrook Garden Club, as Elaine said, and to promote awareness of Earth Day every year, we attempt to do a poster contest, working with the middle school, and we partnered with the middle school this year, and Mrs. Lisa Paquita was kind enough to put it in her curriculum, and we got a bunch of wonderful posters submitted, and we judged, and we're showing you the winners of our contest. Unfortunately, two of the winners in busy evenings weren't able to attend tonight, but we'd like to congratulate the winners. They have Hamilton Bridges, he went third place, you can see Ella, one second, right? And Karen was our honorable mention, and in first place was Brittany Rivera, and they weren't able to join us tonight. So we have some gift cards, so local education and art shop for you, so use them well and create some more wonderful arts with messages. Thank you, Lisa, for partnering with us, and hopefully we do it again next year. And that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have a proclamation this evening for Motorcycle Awareness Month. Proclamation Motorcycle Awareness, April 24, 2017. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our villages, cities, and states, and whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across the state and millions across the nation, and whereas in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness, and whereas all motorcycle organization, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our state should join Abate of Ohio, Inc. and the Motorcycle Ohio Program in actively promoting safe operation, increased riding training, improved licensing efforts, and motorist awareness, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout the state of Ohio. And now therefore, the city of Belbrook supports and recognizes the month of May, 2017, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. So, thank you, and I'm guessing Louis, you probably helped get this together? Louis is our cameraman. I think this is very important, especially now, it seems like I keep seeing more and more people texting, driving, and then all of a sudden, they're weaving, and I can imagine that it'd be much more dangerous for a motorcycle. So, I think it's an important thing to recognize, and I think it's good for all of us to be aware that motorcyclists are on the road. We have one more item on the agenda, but the person who was supposed to be here and recognized this evening is one of our lieutenants on the fire department, and he's on a call. So, we're going to, Mr. Narker, we're going to Lieutenant Narker, we're going to hold off and wait as long as we can, the only problem is, we have a very short agenda this evening. So, I may bring the kids up if we have to, but we will get through it. So, we're going to move on to public hearings, which we have none, introduction of ordinances we have none, resolutions we have none, but we do have a city manager's report.
Yes, hopefully a long one, right?
I saw it, it's not very long.
Just a few items this evening. First, a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, May 2, is the election for our general fund renewal levy. This is a renewal levy, so there's no increase in taxes, but we'd like to encourage everyone to get out to vote. We've distributed information, we've sent out a postcard, we've put it in the newsletter, information's on our website, so if anyone has any questions, it's out there, but there's no increase in taxes. This raises about $200,000 a year for the city, very important to our operations, so we encourage everyone to get out and vote a week from tomorrow. It's the only thing on the ballot, so you've got to remember to get out there and cast your vote. As everyone knows, the Sugar Maple Festival was this weekend, another very successful event. The weather cooperated for the most part, we didn't get rain like they thought we might earlier in the week. It was a little cooler on Saturday, but I have not heard officially how they did, but I know from seeing the results from Friday night and the attendance on Saturday during the day, it was a very well-received event. As part of that, I just want to make sure that we thank the city workers that work that, they sort of do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work to that. The service department is out there, they're the ones that are collecting the trash, making, keeping things clean, police department, making sure everything goes fine, and the fire department, although they have their boot too, they're there to respond to calls during that, and I know during the day on Saturday, there weren't calls at the event, but they're still responsible to call, responding calls elsewhere. So, they're oftentimes pulled in multiple directions, but they always get the job done, and I just want to make sure that they're recognized for the work that they do during that festival. Another item that I included with your information for this meeting, the 2017 water rate survey was issued. The city of Oakwood collects information on water rates for 66 area communities. Happy to say that the city of Belbrook has what is now the 22nd highest water rate each year that has gone up, down, however you want to say it, positively moved in a positive direction. So, for us, on a quarterly basis, our residents pay just about $103 on average for their water bill. If that same resident was receiving that water from Green County, they would pay an additional $24, a quarter, almost $100 a year more for their water. So, I think it says something to council, we have not raised water rates in at least six years, and been able to, even while doing that, make improvements to the water system and improve the quality of everything. So, just want to make sure we recognize that, and also, it's about $100 less than other Green County customers, it's about $50 less than a resident of the central Washington Township area too. So, we have very competitive rates for our water here, and we hope to continue that for the future. The last thing that I had was, at the last meeting, we talked about the service line warranty program that was offered through the National League of Cities. This is a program where they will provide warranties on water service lines, sewer service lines, and then even interior plumbing, obviously for a fee. It's like an insurance policy for those things, a lot of, not everyone realizes that those water and sewer lines are their responsibilities, and they're not covered by the city. I know council had requested some additional information, I forwarded that on to them, a copy of the contracts, what's covered, and a copy of the letter that would go out. I know I've heard from a couple of you on, I guess, some of the issues, and actually, after our last meeting, I followed up with another community that offered this program. One of the things that this program would do is send out letters on effectively city letterhead endorsing, for lack of a better word, this program, and that has caused some confusion in other communities in terms of people thinking that because the city's in and out that they have to do it, that it's a requirement, that, so it does generate a lot of phone calls. So, I don't know if anyone on council had any questions following this information?
I did look up and forward a couple of things to Mark, just to sort of, you know, online searches on how this was received at other cities. There was, like Mark said, some confusion in other cities. Some of it was actually positive. I guess my viewpoint is, I don't want the confusion and thinking that we're doing this, and we're a very small staff, and to get those calls, these are big cities that did this, and do this, and I think you can, there are other products out there. I'm not personally a fan of them, but in Belbrook, and I think I said this at the last meeting, a lot of us had silver maples in our front yards, and they did do damage to a lot of the sewer pipes going to the roads. The one thing, in this contract, they would pay up to $4,000, which normally, I don't, I'm not an expert on it, but it's usually about, at least in my neighborhood, they're in the $6,000 or $7,000, $8,000, so you would still have to do that. So that's just sort of my viewpoint.
I read the information too, and I wasn't really comfortable with the city endorsing any particular insurance company and marketing it basically under our name, and that's the whole gist of the licensing, I think. I also called my insurance company and found out that my policy covers a lot of that, so I don't know whether some of our citizens have the same coverage. I couldn't really, my agent said that he wouldn't insure what other companies did, but some do cover it, so.
That's a good thought, didn't think of that. Forrest?
That's a, I was going to mention that too, some homeowner policies do cover some of that, but you have to check with your policy, because they do very quite a bit.
Yeah, I would be uncomfortable with making it look like the city was endorsing it, if it was very specifically clear that it was just being offered in the Belbrook area, but.
I thought that the exhibit, though, actually basically is paying us $5 for every time that our logo appears on their stuff, you know, when the customer buys something, so.
I thought it was $50.
$50.
Oh, I'm sorry, $50. Yeah, I just looked at it real quick. I was like, oh, but.
I think that's for each policy that is purchased.
Purchased, right. But then I also was confused about whether or not it would be township too, because are they going to try and figure out whose water system the customer's on in order to put our logo or not put our logo on it?
No, it would only be, well, it would be to city residents.
Just city residents.
Just city residents, yes.
Okay, because you have, you know, if there's a lot of people in the township, it also are on city water, so I wasn't sure if it was going to cause us more concern about, are they on our system, are they off our system, where are they located, does our logo go on or does it not? And, I don't know, I just thought that that seemed more cumbersome than what it should be.
It's targeted to our city residents, they're going to offer it to residents of the city only regardless, because, you know, we don't do the sanitary sewer, so they don't necessarily even have to be our customer, anyone in the city would be, but they don't have to be our customer, because like for a Green County sewer, they would not be our customer, but they would still be offered the program. They're just trying to direct market to a set of people, obviously using our logo and endorsement to generate business.
Right. I kind of feel like it's giving people false comfort, you know, that they think that it's offered by the city, so that makes them feel like they want to buy it, where they, if it was just ABC Company, they may not pay any attention to it.
I'm a little bit bothered why they want to link the name, the city of Belbrook, with this warranty agreement, because I think they could send out to anybody, if people want to partake in it, they can partake in it, but you said that's not part of the process, and that's not part of their offering. So, I mean, they want to get us involved in this some way, shape, or form, and they're going to compensate us for it, so we've got some, we're in the game a little at that point in time, like it or not. And the biggest problem I have is that this is not an insurance contract, and it says obligations of SLWA, the name of the company, under this home services contractor, backed by the full faith and credit of SLWA, not guaranteed by service contract reimbursement insurance policy. This is not a contract of insurance. They lay it out pretty clear, but we would have to make sure, I would want to make sure everybody who signed up for this understands what it is, because if this service line warranty company goes under, your insurance is worthless. And if we had a catastrophic event in the city or something like that, who's to say these guys wouldn't just close their doors and say, "We're out," you know? I don't like it, and I think if they were, not that they're a discreditable agency, but if they were really worth their salt, so to speak, I would think they'd be able to market this under their own name without our name at all. But I think if we had something catastrophic, we had just claim after claim after claim, who's to say these guys aren't going to say, "Ciao, we're shutting down, and we're not going to service these agreements." We might do other agreements, we're not going to service the Belbrooks, and we'll move on, and then we can go find out where they're at, located, chase them down and all that, and we'll be involved in that some way, shape, or form regardless.
Do I, formal poll?
No, I think it's pretty clear what the council's opinion of that is, and we'll just let them know, and I think the key component is making sure that people are aware that they do have a responsibility for the service lines, and if something does go wrong, and anyone who's had it realizes that one way or the other, but if they haven't, they may not realize that, but we can continue that education part of it through newsletters and things like that, too.
And, you know, these things can make sense for certain people if you do have a good policy, and it's not covered under your insurance, and you don't have enough money to cover potential expenses, but you can afford the, how much is it a year?
It varies, but it's around $100, yeah.
$100 a year, so, and there are companies out there who do provide this, so.
Right. That is all I have.
That is all you have, okay.
Mark, I had a question, though, about that water survey. It looked like the sewer, we were higher up on the sewer, and that's because it's Green County, is that?
Yes.
Yep.
But that's part that we do not control.
We do not control the sewer rates, so they are, and then obviously then on the combined water and sewer rates, we are not nearly as effective as we are on the water only, but the water's the only one that we have any control of the rates on.
Green County had, over the last 10 or 20 years, three or four major projects when the EPA was enforcing certain things. One is they took over Seadriville, one was Shawnee Lake, the other one was the $70 million they spent here, even though I think Montgomery County covered a big chunk of that, so, but yes, they are high. Anything else for our city manager? Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to committee reports. Service?
The only thing I was going to say is thank you to the service department and the fire and police for their contributions to the festival.
Yeah, they all did a great job. Safety?
Just thanks to fire and police and everybody from the city that was involved, they did a spectacular job. Everything went real smooth.
Finance and audit, now you're happy that tax season's done?
That's right. And speaking of that, tax season has come and gone for 2017, it's important to note that Belbrook does not have a city income tax, and that's why this general fund renewal levy is all that much more important to us. This is a big chunk of our money, we spend the money like it's our own, if we did need it, we wouldn't put on the ballot, so I think it's very important that everybody gets out and votes on May the 2. I know it's going to be a single item, it doesn't even have an issue number associated with it, I don't think I've ever seen that before, but without an income tax, it makes the general fund renewal a very important aspect of our finances.
And I'd just like to expand on that a little bit, that as Mark said earlier, this is just renewal, there is no tax increase. Also, I was looking at, I saw it pop up on my computer, the Daily News election edition on the front, it didn't even name us as a city as having anything on the ballot, but if you did look it up, it was on there, but it didn't really say anything about renewal, it just had the amount of the existing levy, which sort of makes it potentially like it's a new tax, but it's not, it's something that has to be renewed every five years, and so just be aware of that if you happen to look at the newspaper.
The other thing, Mayor, too, we want to add, that this is general fund money which can be used for multiple purposes. If we collect fees for the water fund, and that money's for the water fund, it must stay in the water fund to be used for agreed-upon prescribed water fund expenditures, things like that. So this is the best money to have, because it gives us flexibility to go in, and if we needed to do more street repairs, something like that, we would certainly have the availability to go out and use some of that stuff. So, this is the best kind of funding for us to have, and not that we spend it recklessly, but it's the kind of money that we have flexibility how we spend it.
Community affairs?
Just want to, we lost a member on the Old Village Review Board, just after we finally filled the, all the boards, and then we lost another member, so we will be advertising, I don't know if I.
It's advertised now, we have a couple of applications, the deadline is, I believe, next Wednesday, so, yeah, we hope to have interviews in the near future.
Are there any restrictions on this particular member?
I don't believe so, because he was not an Old Village resident, so, just have to live in the city, that's the only requirement, so, and I just add my thanks to the service department and everyone who was involved with the Sugar Maple, it's a huge undertaking, and they did a bang-up job. Love the superheroes.
That is it for committee reports, and we have nothing on old business unless someone has some old business. We have one quick discussion item on new business, and that's the liquor control notice for a new permit, which is really the signing of an existing permit.
Yes, this is just, I'm not sure why I came across as a new permit, but Tixtai Grill changed ownership, so that's what this is related to, so, just getting, and we've had no issues, obviously, there with the liquor permit.
Any questions about that? That is it, open discussion.
I have one item, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to talk to one of our citizens who is a Purple Heart recipient, and he asked if it would be possible for the city to designate themselves a Purple Heart city, it's an organization throughout the United States. I had a meeting with the citizen and someone who heads the local chapter, and what it would entail would be the city to present to them a proclamation, maybe a flag, maybe designating a thoroughfare, a sub-name on a thoroughfare. So what I wanted to do tonight is sort of run it by council and see if it was something that we would be interested in doing, and then the city manager and I could sit down with the gentleman and find out all of what it entails. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like there'd be any expense to the city at all, and they're very flexible as to, you know, what they would ask for, and, you know, a flag and maybe some signage, I think is the only thing that we talked about, so, I don't know what my other council members think, but I think it's probably something that we should pursue. There's a lot of veterans in the city of Belbra, a bunch of Purple Heart recipients, this person happens to be my neighbor, he has two Purple Hearts, the gentleman that he brought with him has three, you know, proximity to the base, there's a lot of military, so I think it should be something that we consider.
Forrest?
I'm on board totally with that.
Veteran, I'm on board with it as well.
Are you a veteran? Yeah. And probably a Purple Heart recipient.
Sounds like a good idea.
Good recognition, I'm glad we were talking about it, I think it's a good idea, we're going to go forward with it for sure.
Okay. And we really do have a very strong military background, Rosie Rosen Garden, who was a very back test pilot in Wrightfield, and crashed, and Chuck Yeager, and Jim Martin, who lives in the township, who's now very active in the World War II, because he was one of the gentlemen who jumped in, like 101st Airborne, so there's a lot of that, so. All right. Great idea. Forrest, anything from the discussion?
Two weeks ago, last Tuesday, or Tuesday, we did the community walk, it was, I think it was very productive, a lot of ideas came about, a lot of people from the township and Belbrook attended, and a lot of good ideas came about, and it's an ongoing process, and there'd be more information come out. But I think one of the things that's driving the community walking and bike paths and connectivity to other cities is people's health. People are becoming more health-conscious, and I think it's very important that we participate and try to make this happen. And it's also enjoyable, and if you have walks and connectivity like that, the little businesses downtown seem to thrive better. The city doesn't make so much money on businesses or taxes or anything, but it does make a more, a community that's more pleasing, somewhere somebody wants to go and hang out for the evening, and so, I'm looking forward to this process continuing, and I think something good will happen. Of course, there's always the money aspect, but there's a lot of things that could be done, it's really not that expensive, and, but I'm looking forward to it, that's all I got.
Thank you to all the services of the city, from the service department to the fire department and police department for participating in the festival this last weekend. It always makes it a success when the complement of city groups get together and make it right for everyone. The other thing, I would echo Forrest's comment here, on the community walk, I think there's a lot of exchange of ideas that, you know, have to be looked at, provided that we have the resources and available to us to make the things work, but I think it's a great idea.
I also participated in the Walkability Survey, and it was encouraging that there were so many people who saw the same things and had the same types of ideas, so I think there's a lot of consensus of what they'd like the community to look like and what direction they'd like to see us be more pedestrian-friendly, and, you know, there's ways to do it, so, that was encouraging.
I just, I wanted to say congratulations to the Sugar Maple Festival Committee, because they did a lot of work in trying to organize all those different vendors, and put people in the right places, and organize the parade and everything, there's a lot that goes into it, so, not just our service folks, but also the people that volunteer for all that stuff. It was a great festival, hopefully everybody got to go out and enjoy that. Of course, you can't always count on the weather, so Saturday was a little bit iffy, a little cold for those of us that were waving in the parade, it was chilly, but it was a great festival, and wanted to say congratulations to them. On the walkable community, also, it was a great event, I appreciate those, our staff's work on that. We had over 50 people, and trying to organize how that was all going to be orchestrated and fit everybody in the room, and that sort of thing. I think there were a lot of good ideas, I think there were a lot of the same ideas, but I guess the thing that stood out to me was the parking situation downtown, and trying to figure out how to coordinate among businesses. I know that we talked about, the parking spaces are all public property, or, I'm sorry, private property, so the parking spaces in front of a business are owned by that business, so they of course want to put up a sign that says, "Parking only for my business," but then if you walk through there, it's like everybody has their own sign, which is very confusing and kind of not friendly for those people that are trying to figure out where they want to go to eat, or where they want to go to shop, and that sort of thing, so I think if we're going to change that, it's going to take some community and some coordination and some, you know, businesses working together to figure out how to solve that problem.
That's true, only for the plaza.
Yeah, yeah.
Not for the, not for the main street.
Not for the main street. But then we also talked about more walkways and getting crosswalks through the city, so I think we'll probably be able to do that one fairly quickly, but some of the other ideas, it's kind of like, it's kind of like a home improvement project, where you want to fix this, but if you fix that, then you need to fix this, and if you fix that, then you need to fix this, and it becomes a bigger and bigger problem. So, I think if we figure it out and try to take it off in chunks, and do maybe Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, I think we'll get there.
I was out of town and unable to attend the festival, but I heard nothing but rave reviews about it, especially the beer garden, I think on Friday night was the night of choice, so it sounds like it's a good time, and I wanted to congratulate the committee, because it sounds like we've really taken the festival up a notch, and I think this is the direction we want to push forward with, so they did a great job, thanks.
I just would like to sort of echo some of the same things, the committee last year, I know, gave out a fair amount of money that they had made last year to different organizations, including schools, and I can't remember all of them, and I think this year was even a bigger success, so I think it was a very big success. I would also like to thank, or congratulate, a couple people. I know we had a group, I was just trying to find on my phone, of Belbrook kids who were in Washington DC for, it's called We the People Competition, they had won, and they were in DC all weekend, competing against other high schools, so that's very impressive. Don't know how they did, it was, I'm sure, a very tough competition, talking to some of the parents, so I'd like to congratulate them. And I also read today, I saw one of the students at Belbrook, the first round of ACT scores came back, and Belbrook has another young student who got a 36, which that's perfect, which is, there's only, I'm not sure how many of those in the state, but not many. So, 36 is pretty impressive, I won't say what I got. And it was 36. And I think that is all I've got, I was trying to think, there's one other thing. So, we'll open up to, I think we believe our guest of honor is not that far out, and should be coming up pretty soon. coming up pretty soon, so this is open discussion, if there's a member of the public who would like to get up, you would need to come up and say your first name, otherwise we will discuss something else here, I'm sure, for the next few minutes, you have five minutes and you just need to say, I see Louis, your name, address?
I'm Louis Schatzberg, I live at forty-eighty-two Ridgestop Drive, I'm also one of the Sugar Maple Festival committee members, I put up the directional signs, direct everybody to park up at the intermediate school, and there's only one sign that I put up that comes downtown, and that's at the Shell Station, because I tell people, on a good day in Belbrook, there's very little parking, let alone close two streets and at ten thousand people, and you ain't got no parking. The hit this year with the superheroes, the Batmobile, that was, you know, when I was bringing the kids down, it was fun, because I told them Batman was driving around the local area and he got kind of tired driving, so he parked his car at the park and he had other business to contend, so they just loved that, so, it was a great, it was a great festival, I think, and I enjoyed doing it every year, I get done and I'm just tired, but I enjoyed doing it and meeting all the people and seeing all the people, and the parade is always a big hit, and you know, it takes a lot to put that festival on, especially to get the vendors in and out, you know, and keep everybody safe, you know, throughout the festival is a, is a big undertaking for our departments that, you know, we're not used to having this, you know, doubling the size of our city in a couple, you know, a couple hours, but everybody seemed to have a great time, and you know, Bellhop Cafe over there, they do a great job over there, they do their community breakfast on Sunday for the vendors and they always have a good showing over there for that, so, I mean, there's a lot of community people, a lot of community things that come together at this festival that bring a lot of people in, so, I want to thank you, city council and the city manager, for your support of the Sugar Maple Festival, because there is a lot of things that go on, like with our service department, they're all working when we're working, so we never see what they're doing, but our city is always looking beautiful, I think, and they do the best that they can with what we have to work with, and, you know, I mean, I'm proud to live here in Belbrook and be part of the committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Louis. So we are now going to resume mayor's announcements and special guests, because I think we have our special guest, I just saw him walk in, so I would like to introduce from Premier Health Miami Valley Group, Nurse Manager Lisa Mellon, Lisa, would you please come up?
Hi, I do want to recognize a couple people that are here, Mary Lou Klein, she is our outreach EMS outreach manager, Elizabeth Evans is our EMS coordinator for Miami Valley Hospital South and also Jamestown, Kathy Hall is our clinical director for operations at Miami Valley Hospital, and then we have Joanne Ringer, who is the VP/COO of Miami Valley Hospital, Gail Jeffries is one of the clinical nurses that were working that day, that we're gonna recognize, and then Chris Wolf is the nurse that's gonna be presenting the award, but I do want to thank you guys for having us, and I do want to tell you a little bit, Miami Valley Hospital has been part of the community of Belbrook and will celebrate in our ten-year anniversary this fall, hard to believe it's been ten years, but the emergency department continues to grow, and in 2016, we saw close to thirty-five thousand patients, and our medic volume increased for Belbrook by six point four percent, which is great, and this is really a large part of the commitment from the community and also our Belbrook and EMS and fire department, we believe in collaborating with the EMS community and we really want to make sure the patients are receiving the best care possible, our emergency department satisfaction scores when we started almost ten years ago, we were in the ninetieth percentile, and we have maintained that ninetieth percentile for almost ten years, so that really does say what a great hospital and community and all the resources that go into that, I would also like to thank Dr. Marriott, who could not be here because he's working, but he is the Belbrook's EMS medical director, and then Chris Wolf is going to come up and give the award, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, we made it, huh? Well, good evening, my name is Christine Wolf, and as Lisa said, I'm a nurse at Miami Valley South Emergency Department, thank you for this opportunity to recognize Lieutenant Greg Narker tonight, in emergency healthcare, we do a lot of training, and when we train, we often use the term, in a perfect world scenario, we would, well, on February nineteenth, while caring for William Bruckin, that perfect world scenario came true, and it started with the efforts of Lieutenant Narker, Lieutenant Narker, Greg, that's his name, was doing what people do on a Sunday, he was at church, and while at church, he witnessed Mr. Bruckin struggling and eventually losing consciousness, Greg started CPR immediately on scene, starting CPR immediately on this onset of a cardiac event is crucial for a positive outcome, Greg provided that care known as, oh, I said that, as bystander CPR, and Mr. Bruckin was very lucky, because he's not just any bystander, right? Shortly after Greg started CPR, one of his crews arrived on scene and transported Mr. Bruckin to Miami Valley South Emergency Department, there in the emergency department, Mr. Bruckin wasn't what we call in a code blue situation, it was all hands on deck, I was so grateful that Greg was there to help us with the story and to support his crew, now in the midst of caring for Mr. Bruckin, another life-threatening emergency was happening, I'm pointing this out because while our ER team was handling these critical situations, Mr. Bruckin's family members had arrived, Greg chose to stay and be the liaison between the family and the caregiving team, now normally that would be my job as the team leader in the emergency department, but because there were two situations occurring simultaneously, I was unable to, and Greg recognized how important this communication with the family is, as you can imagine, and I know at one point when Mr. Bruckin's son and other family members arrived, Greg looked at me and indicated he was gonna leave, and I shot him a look like, oh no, you're not going anywhere, and so graciously he stayed. So yeah, I nominated him for this award, you bet I did, because Greg realized not only clinically how important it was to provide bystander CPR, but also the importance of supporting his own crew in this life-threatening situation, and also to support the family and the members of the patient and the ER staff altogether, that's quite an amazing, intuitive, just compassionate ability, Greg was there every step of the way to ensure that we were all taken care of, and this speaks to the level of compassion he has for people. Greg, I'd like to present you with this award for outstanding lifesaver for your efforts on February nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Thank you for recognizing on all levels what is important and continuing to serve your community in the city of Belbrook. At this time, I'd like to give an opportunity if any family members would like to speak.
I'm Linda Bruckin, I live on South Linda, so I'm from Belbrook.
Mrs. Bruckin, the TV can't, the TV can't hear you unless you have the microphone.
Well, I asked, when Bill was in ICU, he had a tube down his throat, he was in really bad shape, and so I was really grateful, I asked people at church what happened, and they said they were moving pews and Greg, you know, helped the CPR and did stay at Miami Valley, and Kimmy's wife also, sitting there, she, it was really, really important, because I had a chance to, you know, it just gave me a chance to kind of anchor myself, because I was in terrible shock, and I asked the ICU nurse, I said, well, he had brain damage, because he hasn't breathed, you know, been breathing, and I didn't know how long he didn't breathe, and they said, and she said, no, because he had started CPR on him so quickly and so soon, he would not, he would, more than likely would not have any brain damage, so we had this joke between us, sometimes Bill can be really grumpy, and so he'll, he'll say something, and I didn't know for like three days if, you know, that was going to be the fact, and so I came in on the third day and the tube was out of him, and he looked at me and he goes, happy boy, and I knew right then that he didn't, he didn't suffer any damage, because we had this little joke between us, I said, come on, Bill, he goes, happy boy, and so, I thank you for letting me speak, and thank you, Greg, thank you so much.
Scott, Scott also noticed something, this is Scott, his son, he doesn't want you to know, and Scott noticed something about the staff at Miami Valley South that I didn't, you want to say something, Scott?
Sure. Hello, I'm Bill's baby, Scott. We're here to honor Greg, but I also wanted to mention her about Miami Valley South, I got there a little less than a half hour when the incident happened at church, and when I walked in the room, there was at least a dozen people around my dad, and it was just amazing watching the teamwork between the people at Miami Valley South, and not just the teamwork, but the compassion, there were three ladies at his head, and then there was one lady, and all she did for over two and a half hours was work the bag, just squeezing this bag, and we kind of joked that we didn't want to have to be the person to arm wrestle her. It was just an amazing experience, it was one of the most incredible things I ever saw in my life, watching that team save him, and I just wanted to mention them, too, thank you, Greg.
Real quick, I just want to say thank you to Miami Valley South, thank you, Chris, you know, it was a lot of people came together that day, I mean, like they said, my wife, Kim, was right there, you know, Bill, there's a friend of mine, I've known him, I actually went to school with his nephew in high school, so I've known him for the family for a while, seeing him there was kind of tough, you know, she stepped in, when I stepped out to make phone calls to try and let the medics know that he was in full arrest at that point, she was making sure people were doing, kept doing CPR right, kept switching people around, because, I mean, with CPR nowadays, you're lucky if you can do two minutes, solid, good CPR, and we were switching out people, you know, she went with me to the hospital, like Chris said, you know, we stayed, I mean, I could tell that they were really getting slammed and, you know, it was just, you know, Washington Township came in, it happened in Centerville, you know, those guys took over right away, they did an awesome job getting him over to the hospital, you know, it was, it was just a great cumulative team effort, and I can't thank, it wasn't just me, I just was lucky enough to be the one to start the whole situation, so, but you know, I was so glad last Sunday at Easter to see Bill at church, back ushering, doing what he does and what he was doing that day when it happened, so, you know, we sat and talked for quite a while after church, and I'm just glad he's doing so well, and again, I just can't thank everybody, and thank you.
Anyone on council? Greg, I'd just like to say congratulations, it's nice to have the department and you, especially since you live about nine houses down from me. And I'm pretty sure if someone's gonna have a bad episode of something like right now is the best time, I'm guessing one of the doctors just came in, and, and we have the staff here, so, so congratulations, Greg, and thank you for being part of our fire department, anyone on council have anything else to say, it's quite an honor to have them.
It's been said.
Thanks, Greg, and it's nice to have Miami Valley South so close, it was, used to be that we had to go to Cattery to go someplace else, and it's nice to have a hospital nearby, and I've seen a couple incidents where times of the essence, and just being so close was the right answer, so thanks.
So, we will go back to open discussion, if there's anyone else who would like to get up and say anything this evening, going once, going twice, oh, I see one gentleman.
A piece of information you don't have, my name is Jordan Vanjo, I live in Centerville, I'm married to Greg's mother-in-law, I was at church that Sunday, too, and Father Giki was doing the mass, and he stopped and stepped down off the altar, and you could hear him because his microphone was still on, as he gave Bill last rites, if that has to happen to you, wouldn't you be glad that you were in a church with a congregation to pray for you, a priest to administer last rites, and a paramedic to help save your life? It doesn't get better than that.
It's a very, very, very good point. Anyone else? So, does any other member on council have any other business to come forth this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.